Alrighty, good evening everyone. Welcome to our February work session. We're glad you all are here. We're going to review the agenda for next week's board meeting. I'll start with saying a quick prayer and then we'll have the pledge by the Appalachian High School JRTC cadets. We'll approve some minutes, the agenda. We'll have a committee report from Mr. Bailey, a building committee report possibly, quite a few superintendent recognitions, and then, we don't have any requests currently, do we?
No.
Perfect. Alrighty, so we'll jump on into the superintendent department reports. We'll start with Dr. Bowen with the support services report.
Nothing at this time.
Alright, thank you sir. Next, we've got Ms. Houston with business services report.
Good evening. We will go over our invoices between 10 and 74,999. We just do the top half because those are the ones the board hasn't seen or referred before. So the first one is North Georgia Physicians Group Sports Medicine, paid out of the general fund for $10,000, and this is for a payment on our athletic trainers at the three high schools. Specialty cleaning services, paid out of the general fund for 17,295, is for all local gym high cleaning, so I think that's high cleaning, right?
Handstand.
Okay. That's district wide. Williams Electric, paid out of the general fund, 14,840 dollars, is for 53 Seagate drives, and that's district wide. Tech Optics, paid out of Capital Projects, 13,905 for syntetic installation, and that's district wide. Tech Optics, general fund, 15,145 dollars and 70 cents for Mitel yearly support subscription, and that's district wide. Tech Optics, paid out of the Capital Projects, for 15,444 dollars and 52 cents for 10 PC computer modules, and that's district wide. East Georgia Golf Carts, paid out of the general fund, but the sheriff's department really gave us these funds. We're very thankful for that. 19,613 dollars and 92 cents for three golf carts, and that will be for the high schools. Great Minds PVC, paid out of the general fund, 38,834 dollars for Geodes Books and Emergent Readers K through second grade for County Line Elementary School. Any questions on those? Alright, we are well into the budget process, so I just wanted to go through the budget timeline for you. So we are, the education of the budget process, we developed a budget video, we recorded that yesterday, so it will be given to our faculty in SGT meetings in March, or at the end of March or beginning of April. And then, development of the budget, we opened the file back in November. The governor presented his recommendations on January 11th, and then our preference sheets were due back from employees on January 26th. The deadline for the general fund budget request was February 16th. Allotments were given to school already in February, and I am doing the salaries and benefit projection as we speak. The deadline for all other funds, these are our capital projects, special revenue funds, is due March 1st, and then we'll make some preliminary salary decisions in cabinet on March 5th. Employees sign contracts due back on March 8th. We'll have a career fair on March 9th, and the preliminary fiscal year 2025 QV projections should be mid to April, so that will give us our revenue. And then Barrow County Tax Assessor's Office annual report, his projections will be in April also. So then, I'm going over the budget timeline with you now. We'll review the draft of the budget by executive cabinet on April 9th. We'll have our financial planning session on April 23rd. Guy Rogers, he said he couldn't make any of the dates this year, so maybe he'll just give us a verbal annual report. We will have a tentative general fund budget for you April 30th. We'll approve that tentative budget in May. We'll receive our tax digest from the tax commissioner in May. We'll advertise our budget hearings. We'll have our work session to set our tentative millage rate, and then we'll have a work session for our all other funds, and then we'll meet again in June to approve our tentative budget on all other funds and our millage rate. We'll have our public hearings, and then hopefully if all goes well, we will approve the final budget on June 25th of this year. Any questions on that? And all these dates are tentative, so if you see the dates here, just make sure, especially for the public hearings, that we look on the website to make sure that those are the dates that are set, because sometimes we have to wait on information from Barrow County or the state, and so we may have to adjust those dates. But right now, that's my plan. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next. Anything right now, Ms. Beck's with planning and personnel?
None at this time.
Thank you. And Dr. Thompson, strategic information services.
You have the January communications report posted for your review. You also have the 120th day enrollment count. I will very quickly point out a quirk on that that I thought was interesting, given the topics we discussed last week, which is traditionally, our enrollment has peaked around day 40 or 80. Between those ranges is when our enrollment peaks, and then it declines the remainder of the year. This is the first time I can recall in 12 years of doing this, we are at the highest point in the year on day 120, and we're now over 3% growth from last year. So growth is showing those numbers, it's getting down.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. We're going to backtrack. Mr. Purno, we're going to go back to you with system operations.
Okay, our report is posted and photos there. If anybody has any questions, I have to answer them.
Those are exciting.
It's looking good.
I feel like things moving along.
Yes, sir.
See how deep they get over the ground.
That's exciting to see that part going vertical. Alright, we appreciate those photos. And last, we've got Dr. Moten with teaching and learning.
We have a report on the Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl, and this is Amy Ryan, federal programs and school improvement. It's been sent that report.
Good evening. We held our system Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl on January 26th at AIM, and we had participating teams from Hayman Morris, Bear Creek, Westside, Arts and Innovation, and BASSA, and Wynderbarrow High School. And of those, the middle school and elementary schools have to answer six rounds of 10 questions each, from 10 Georgia book award winner nominees, and there are 20 Georgia Peach Teen Book Award nominees that those students at high school have to be able to answer in six rounds of 10 questions. And so, the points were tallied for each of those rounds, and we were, the following teams were recognized for their achievements. So at the elementary level, because we only had Austin Road at that, they automatically went to the east region. So then, middle school, Hayman Morris, went on as the champion, and our second place was AIM. Our high school division, BASSA, was our champion, and then Wynderbarrow was our second place. So the top two teams did go on to compete at their east region competition that was held on February 10th at Loganville High School. And our first time elementary actually placed third in the region, Austin Road, and those were two brand new coaches to Helen Ruffin, and they're excited about already getting prepared for next year. The middle school, Hayman Morris, came in third for the east region, and at high school, BASSA, came in second for east region. So they did really well and represented Barrow County well.
Awesome. So I just, this is a phenomenal program. My daughter was involved in all of it through school. If you guys haven't, like, taken the opportunity to go watch one of these competitions, it is unbelievably thrilling to go watch one of these things. How many books do they read?
So it's 10 for elementary, middle, and 20 for high school.
Yeah, and they ask questions like, you know, in the book so and so and so and so, what was, what did Paul say about his car?
Right. Right.
It's that type of stuff, so I agree.
And the, by the time you get to the regional and then you go to state, the state competition, you get to maybe one or two questions in, and they're buzzing, and the rest of the audience is like, what was the question? Because it's in this book, so and so, and then there's buzzing. So it is very exciting trying to anticipate the questions, but by then, the top two teams, they know those books backwards and forwards, and it is, it's very, very nerve wracking to watch, but those kids can really...
It truly is amazing what they read and...
And there are some great books and some great opportunities for good conversations. My, both my kids went through the same thing, and we went on to state in a different county, but it was exciting as a parent and as an administrator to be a part of it. But just the love of reading you get to see in a lot of kids, so it's a wonderful program.
I agree. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, we'll have Dr. McCannan coming next week to give us an update, is that correct? Yep. So lots of exciting things happening with the superintendent search. The board's hard at work at coming up with leadership profiles and really strong interview questions, and Dr. McCannan, Mr. Johnson, the entire team is really out there just making Barrow proud and making people want to come and interview for that position. So we're excited to see the applicants. I'm going to go ahead and get down into new business, and we're going to start off with Dr. Wood with the new CTAE course.
Good evening. It is my pleasure tonight to present some new pathways that we would like to offer at BASSA and potentially at some of the other schools. And just to note, once these courses are approved, any of the high schools can begin offering these courses. So we would like to begin offering four approved courses at the high school. And again, these courses go through the SGT, Board of Directors for Sims, to get their stamp of approval before I then present them to the school board. So the first one is the Light Duty Hybrid Electric Vehicle Technology, and that's in preparation for the grant that we received, the $150,000 grant that will buy us two electric vehicles and all the professional learning for two instructors. So we're looking forward to starting that in the fall, and it'll be a standalone. It is only one course, so it's not a true pathway yet, but it is a course that will be offered. The other course is the Artificial Intelligence Pathway, and that is a true pathway with three courses in artificial intelligence. The other one is Film Production. This is under the Arts and Graphics, and this is just in addition to some of the, we already have one pathway, this takes it a little bit further into sort of that whole production and set design. And then, the other pathway is the Workforce Ready Pathway, which is a, three courses that really focuses on career competencies at the high school level. So we have some options in middle school for a career connections class. This takes it into the high school, and this is three courses, so they could be a pathway completer in this workforce ready pathway, and it really is job shadowing, internships, resumes, mock interviews, and then in the third course, they do take an EOPA or credentials of value. So we are requesting that the superintendent recommend that the Board of Education approve those four CTAE course offerings for next school year. All of the attachments are there so that you can read what they are, and there's no financial impact at this time. These are all, we have staff to teach these, and then the EV is the most expensive one, and that's covered with a grant. So, any questions about the pathways or the course offerings?
I think I heard you say to start with it, this will be available like any of our high school students, is that correct?
We are, well, so, once we get them approved, any high school can teach them, and there is some discussion about, you know, will, you know, can we make these available to the other high schools?
Let me hear that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. That's exciting. Consent agenda?
Yes.
Awesome. Next, I'd like to offer, welcome up Mr. Purno for the CFIT Grounds Improvement Project Guaranteed Maximum Pricing Course.
Okay, in May of 2019, the Barrow County School System and the Barrow Community Foundation entered into an agreement to allow for improvements to be made to the CFIT buildings and grounds, utilizing funds raised by the foundation. In March of 2022, the Board of Education approved Barrow County Schools Business Services to receive funds from the foundation in order to make those improvements. Funds are deposited into a school system account and distributed from there to engineers, contractors, and vendors in accordance with verified completion of project milestones. Barrow County School System Operations reviews and approves each request for payment. The initial guaranteed maximum price that was approved by the board was $3.3 million. Since that time, the Barrow Community Foundation has raised additional funds and would like to add scope to complete Phase 1 work on this project, and so we're asking the superintendent to recommend an increase to the guaranteed maximum price of $1 million for Phase 1 of the Barrow Community Foundation Site Improvement Project at CFIT. So that would bring it to $4.3 million.
Any questions? Consent? Charlie? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and last, I'd like to welcome up Ms. Follows to talk about the board policy IHE promotion and retention.
Good evening. I want to start with a summary. Waiving Promotion Retention: Consequences Tied to the Georgia Milestones Under Direction of the Georgia Department of Education. School districts with flexibility contracts such as charter system or strategic waiver school systems can use input from teachers and parents, placement committees, class performance, and formative tools to determine the need for promotion or retention for students. Promotion and retention decisions for the 2023-2024 school year will not be based on performance on the Georgia Milestones assessment. So our recommendation from the superintendent is a temporary waiver of policy IHE promotion and retention through July 31st of 2024. So this is the same as last year. Any questions?
That last one, can we get that printed in big letters and put it in every classroom?
Well, no. We want them to do their very best on their milestones. Yes, absolutely.
Alrighty, consent? Alrighty, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, then we'll, next week we'll ask for authorization for committees to meet, and that looks like just about it. So at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 Alrighty, guys, we're going to, you guys are good to stay put. We're going to go back in that room for a little bit, and we'll be right back.
Hello, I'm Jessica Rayberg, the first year principal of Appalachian High School.
Okie dokie, here we go.
I'm really glad to be here. I taught in the English department here for 11 years, and I'm glad to be back. This is an amazing school with amazing students and a great faculty, and we'd love to have you here.
I think teachers should work here because the community is great.
I love working here mostly because I never know feel supported.
Hey, they should be calling you for the executive session. If you want to, go ahead and turn off your mic, your camera, just so it's a little private.
I like being here in the library, reading, they like talking with me about books and what they're doing, and so I've always felt very good about being a part of Appalachia.
When I asked teachers why they loved being here, their answer was students. We have an amazing student body, it's diverse, and we have hallways filled with kind humans. They love being around each other, they love being around our faculty and staff. We fill the hallways with photos of them, we celebrate their accomplishments, and they're just generally kind and good people who want to contribute to society. We have a recent club that a couple of students have started, and it's the Kindness and Happiness Club, and that says it all about why we want to work with Appalachian students.
I think that it's a great place to come and work at because we have wonderful students here, we have wonderful staff, everyone is just like a huge family.
We have a great student body, they're really kind and generally want to make the world a better place to live. So I keep coming back, and it gives me energy just to work around students like that, so show them what we need to show them.
So Appalachian is definitely a community. We are the Chi. We are a team, and we build all of our activities and enrichment and opportunities around being the Chi community, the Chi nation, and we'd love for you to be a part of that nation. What it means to be a part of the Chi nation is that somebody has your back. Our teachers support each other, they show up for each other, and they feel like a part of the team at all times. That's one great thing about being here is that you know somebody's going to support you and want for you to be your very best for kids every day. Appalachian opened in the year 2000, and so now we have alumni as teachers and staff here, and we have second generation students that are a part of our student body. It's an amazing place to be, it's a beautiful campus, it's clean, it's safe, and the best part is the people. We won for three out of five years the Cooperative Spirit Sportsmanship Award, which means people like coming here to compete and feel welcome here on our campus and feel like our students are great sports and kind and warm and welcoming, and they would welcome you as well. I hope you'll click apply and join us here at Appalachian High School.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Branum, the principal of Hayman Morris Middle School. Welcome to our school.
I love Hayman Morris Middle School because, I mean, there's too many reasons to count. First off, the administration, they are supportive, they truly captivate everything of what it means to be admin, and then the students. The students truly care about their education and truly care about coming to school and learning every day with a good attitude.
I love Hayman Morris Middle School because we have a lot of great opportunities such as the chorus program, drama program, band, and after-school sports. The teachers are all really nice, and you can feel free to ask any of them for help if you need it.
I believe that this school is the top school, middle school, in Barrow County. We are Barrow bold through and through. Our Wildcat family is part of this community. We welcome all parents, all community members into our doors to see the great things that we're doing here. We are striving for excellence, we take care of our kids, we take care of our community, we are family.
What makes Hayman Morris special and unique is all the relationships you build. I have been able to get so involved here, I'm tier coaching as well as doing my masters, and it's just been, the level of support I've had is amazing. I have an amazing co-teacher, amazing administration, and the best students.
Our vision at Hayman Morris is to have a place where students love learning, and through innovative thinking, we're going to prepare them for the challenges and the opportunities that they're going to face in the 21st century.
All of Hayman Morris Middle School because there are a lot of clubs and communities they can join, and the teachers are very nice and supportive in everything that they do.
Teachers strive to work here because it is a great place to be, where we love our students, we love our faculty, we love our parents, and we love this community.
Hayman Morris is a great place to work because we are a big family, and we support each other, and we're active, engaged, and involved with our students and with our community, and trying to build our community into a place we want to be and where we want our students to be happy as well as ourselves.
We want new Wildcats that want to teach, that love kids, and that will be part of a family. We want them to come to our school and see the vision about innovative thinking and striving for the best and helping our students reach their goals and challenges for the future. We want teachers who can create a community where everybody belongs. We hope you belong at Hayman Morris Middle School.
Hi, I'm Barbie Culp, and I am the mentor coordinator for Barrow County Schools.
I'm Rita Brookshire. I've taught in Barrow County Schools for 26 and a half years, and I have recently retired, but I am trying to mentor again. Well, right now, I am mentoring at County Line, and I have a little girl that's in fourth grade, and she's just a quiet, shy little thing. We mostly talk. I have asked her about academics and what her favorite subjects are and her hobbies, and she tells me about these things, but she always leads me back to, she just wants to talk, she doesn't necessarily want to do anything. Last year, I did have a child at Wholesome Elementary, and he was a kindergartner, and we would do different things together. We would go play something, you know, he liked magnets, so we would go play for about 30 minutes and talk. Sometimes I would read a story to him. The counselor asked me last year, maybe reading something to help with behavior, and we would talk about the character in the book and why this character should or shouldn't do something, and then sometimes we would just play, and he looked forward to me coming and just needed that time to himself, time out of the classroom with a special someone, and nobody else got that, and I think he really thought that was pretty special. In the classroom, I was just shown that I really, you know, we really, really need mentors and more of them. We need somebody there for some of those children because it seems like, especially the last few years that I taught, there are more and more children, and as we had talked, more and more children that are lacking a wholesome family life with adults that are present all the time. And if these children can just have a few minutes of someone's time on a regular basis, that's really what they need.
If you have an extra 30 minutes a week, there is a student in Barrow County that needs you.
Hi, I'm Mindy Reed. I'm the proud principal of Bethlehem Elementary. Welcome to our school. Let me tell you a little bit about us to see if you might be interested in joining our school family. Bethlehem is unique in that we are the name of a small town that we serve. We serve the community of Bethlehem, Georgia, in Barrow County, and we are nestled just on the very southern edge of the county in a very up and coming area. But as we grow, we really strive to keep that small-town feel. We want to be a close-knit school and close-knit community, and we have great families and great educators here who really keep that in mind.
I absolutely love being at Bethlehem Elementary School because it is just the epitome of a real family. Everyone here is wonderful, we all work together, everyone feels a part of the school, administration is absolutely wonderful, they're so supportive, and it's just my favorite place to be.
One of the things that makes Bethlehem unique is that we are the shining star, so our mascot is actually a star, and each Friday, you'll see our instructional coach dressed as a star as we welcome and greet kids on their way in. Each Friday also means that it is a BES Spirit Day, and so we have students and staff who dress in our school colors or our BES spirit wear to really celebrate our school. One of the things that we've implemented this year and that will continue next year and years beyond is we do a monthly PBIS assembly where we gather all of our stars, the entire school, in our gymnasium, and we highlight our Word of the Month, which is based on our Character Strong program, and then we also celebrate each other and really take pride in our school. We want to build that school spirit and school pride, and that is one way that we do that here at Bethlehem.
I think what makes Bethlehem unique and special is just how warm and inviting everyone is. I mean, everyone who comes into our building really is a part of our school, and it's just such a safe and special place.
One of the things that makes Bethlehem unique is we have a book vending machine. Some of the schools in our area also have one, but we are very proud of ours. One of the things that we do at Bethlehem is we are a PBIS school, and so our students can earn rewards, but sometimes we find those kids that are just doing that extra and above, and they get highlighted with a positive office referral. That positive office referral gives them the opportunity to earn a token that they can bring and use in our book vending machines. At Bethlehem, we have very high expectations for our students. We also have high expectations for each other. So if you would like to work in an environment where we are pushing each other to be our best and also pushing our students to be our best, this is the school for you. We do that in a loving way, though. We really... We really consider ourselves a school family. We are really a connected group of people who are working for the same purpose, and that is to make our kids have the best learning experience possible. So, we hope to see you possibly in the future at Bethlehem.
Hello, and welcome to Auburn Elementary, home of the Tigers. My name is Lauren Carter, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as principal of this amazing school. Our ideal Tiger team member builds meaningful relationships with students, relentlessly focuses on achievement, and promotes high expectations. At Auburn, we value a growth mindset and seek to engage students in relevant learning experiences.
We have such a strong sense of family community here at Auburn, and it's evident whether you walk around in the classrooms, whether you walk around the halls, or even if you go to some of our events like our Family Fun Event that we had this fall where there were so many people gathered around, reading books and eating smores. It was absolutely fantastic. There is just something special about a family unit, and our school is truly a family unit.
When I first came to Auburn Elementary from my other district, I was very welcomed. I had a great team. I actually got to meet them a lot earlier during the summertime when they were here working at school. And I really got to kind of work with them and kind of see what I was gonna be doing, which was really helpful. And they have been so supportive. They have helped me no matter what.
I actually attended here at Auburn Elementary. And so, being able to come and teach here, be involved in the community, the administration and the teachers have built such a positive learning environment for the students.
All righty, guys, welcome back. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the first personnel report as presented? To move. Mr. Bailey, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? All right, motion passes. And then, at this time, can I get a motion to approve the second personnel report as presented? Ms. Stevens?
Second.
Ms. Malu, all in favor? Motion passes. If you will notice, our very long list of next meeting dates. We'll start by next Tuesday having our regular board meeting, and then, we're gonna have quite a few called board meetings to have the applicant, superintendent applicant review, and then have a few different interviews. Also, note our March 21st board retreat. That'll be here 9 to noon. And then, our March 26 work session. There's nothing else to discuss. You guys have a great week. We're adjourned.